Okay, it is 6:00 PM. We will call the December fourteenth, twenty-one regular county board meeting to order. Uh, we stand fudge of allegiance in a moment of silence. It's the roll call. Okay, I will look for a motion to approve the agenda. Is there a second?
A second.
Um, I want to make a motion to amend the agenda just for Tom Thornton's families here tonight, and he just would like to move the, on the reports, the recognition C1 to the beginning of the reports, so they don't have to sit through our financial reports and stuff. So, I guess I'd like to put that in a motion to move that to the beginning of the reports.
Second.
Motion been made in second, so we will do the voice vote on the amendment first. Any discussion? All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Passes. Back to the regular, um, motion for approval of the agenda. Any discussion? Okay, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Agenda is approved. Members of the public wishing to be heard. Seeing none. Move on to the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we will call the voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Consent agenda passes. Okay, we will jump to reports, and then we will move general ports, uh, C, to the beginning. Glad to see the Thornton family here. With the passing of our county board supervisor, Tom brings back a lot of memories. Just trying to think how many years back it was that I played on the Buzzard softball team with him. A long time ago, I kind of figured that. Uh, he's been a public servant for decades, and then after retirement comes into the county board, serving the public. Uh, he's going to be fairly missed. At this time, I'm going to turn the, this over to our county clerk, Jackie.
We do want to recognize Supervisor Thornton for his years of service. He had served on the board almost six years. Um, one of the conversations I had with him, he was still really interested in running again, and he talked about a trip that he wanted to take to Alaska. Um, and so Tom will be really missed, and when I was appointed back in two thousand and seventeen, he was the very first county board supervisor to come into my office, sit down to try to get to know me, and from then on, he was always in our office after meetings, telling stories, and always he'd call and say, "It's Tommy T." And so, he always had a big smile on his face, and as Chair Galgson said, he will be missed. Um, Jean and the boys, if you want to come up, we do have the certificate and his name plate for you as well.
Well, on behalf of myself and the rest of my family, want to thank everyone for all your kindness, um, the cards, the phone calls, you know, while Tom was not doing well, um, just the words of encouragement for him to keep going. You know, he truly put his heart and soul into representing, you know, his district and anyone else. Yeah, he will be missed. I can't thank you enough for the cards, the phone calls, the plants, the flowers, the little notes that I got about different things, the memories that you shared with me. Truly thank you from the bottom of our hearts.
Thank you. Okay, finishing out C, number two, uh, update on District County Board Supervisor Ray Conce. We have announced the position, and I believe we have two candidates, and we'll be doing interviews to try to get that position filled to finish up the last third of this year, or this term, I should say. We will then move to county administrator review and update. Randy, are you there?
I am, thank you. Um, first, I'd like to, uh, thank the board too for all the outreach and, um, telephone calls, texts, and emails, um, with my dad passing too, so it is really appreciated. I understand what they're going through, and it does mean a lot, so I wanted to thank everybody just starting out, but, um, so this report from Sickich and Lori is going to come up and actually give the PowerPoint, but, um, this was started back in 2018. I attended a, um, meeting, or a meeting in person back then, um, and Sickich did a really good report on fraud in the government, um, which is always, you know, like, the number one concern if you're in my position or Lori's position, to hear taxpayers' money is not being spent properly, or somebody, um, you know, stealing from the county. So, it's very high priority, and they did a good report on a very high-profile case that was actually, I believe, in Illinois. Um, but what really struck me is I was on a table with five or six different, um, traders, I think one was a county clerk, um, and we all had stories, some kind of fraud, um, which really kind of heightened my, my interest in, in bringing them in and doing a forensic audit. Now, the difference between a forensic audit and audit that we get as a forensic, obviously, is kind of what it says, it's very, very detailed. Um, they look at transactions, they look at, um, you know, more detail than we do in just our regu- regular audits. Um, so I wanted to bring them in, but I really had the surprise Central Finance, because obviously you can't announce you're doing a forensic audit, um, because you're trying to find out if anything's wrong. So, the first one we did was quite a surprise to Central Finance, um, but they handled it very well, very professional, and you'll hear the results of, of that one, then, uh, another forensic, it's, so, I'll be available, and Lori obviously will be available after any questions, but Lori, if you can start, uh, that'd be great.
All right, great, thank you, Randy. Um, so right here, Randy talked a lot about the introduction, I just wanted to say that Sickich is actually from Brookfield, Wisconsin, and we're actually working in the advisory, um, uh, area, service area of Sickich, and that's where they use that forensic evaluation team. So, what is a forensic review or internal controls review? In our, um, use of these, those terms are used interchangeably, and like Randy had mentioned that it is really a way-in-depth review of our processes. So, for example, just to give a quick overview of what one would be, so, let's talk about accounts payable. So, we would look at accounts payable checks. Sickich was given access to Laserfish, and they were able to go into Laserfish and see where the check was, which the check is always approved by both the, it's signed by the county clerk and the county treasurer, and so they wanted to make sure that they have those signatures on, they're making sure that the documentation that's with that check is usually more of an invoice in most cases, and that it has the proper stamp, stamp saying that goods and services were received, it has a signature by a department head or, um, another person appointed to sign off on bills or invoices, and then also it's going to have, um, the date of the invoice and the account, so that's really the important things that he was looking for. And that, so then he gets that invoice from Laserfish, and then he's looking at that invoice to make sure that, based off of interviews that he had with employees, that that's the trail that that invoice took. You know, so we got the invoice came in the mail to me, I did my piece, and I'm telling Jim, what's his name, from Sickich, and I had to explain to him what I did with the process, and then who I had given it to, and then they would tell Jim what they did in that process with that same invoice. So, and also what he's doing too is he's trying to make sure that we're complying with the purchasing policy that you guys have adopted already. They're also making sure that, um, that anything of any other, um, any other policies that may be in place, or any federal requirements are of, of, um, in compliance also. And like Randy had mentioned, that this review is done in complete separation of our Clifton-Larson-Alan audit, so I just wanted to make sure that you guys knew that. A lot of times what Clifton-Larson-Alan is looking at is, they're looking a lot more at, um, any expenditures that are part of our single audit, which are any state or federal grants that are taken care of, they do a lot more further analysis with those type of invoices. So, as Randy had mentioned, the 2019 forensic review, um, that's where we went into that central finance area, and they ended up looking at accounts payable, um, cash receipts, um, payroll, they were just really, since we do so many other financial transactions for the county in those three offices, they really focused on us. They ended up interviewing staff in the treasurer's office, central finance, human resources, because they work with us with payroll, um, and then they actually did talk to other admin offices too. And they, um, reviewed a variety of transactions, because we're dealing with so many different kinds of processes, to make sure that they were all in compliance with either the financial procedures or the purchasing policy. So, for the 2019 review, what happened is we ended up getting this report back that had some recommendations of what we could put into place, and remember, these are just recommendations, and as all recommendations, you got to look, weigh the, um, weigh if it's something that we can do, make sure it's not cost prohibitive, you know, there's a lot of other issues that we have to look at. So, this was the list of what they had given, some of the recommendations that they had given us. One was positive pay, I don't know if you guys know what positive pay is, but I'll just kind of give you a quick overview of what it is. That is where, um, we end up sending a file of all accounts payable checks to the bank, so we tell them the check number, the check date, who it's made out to, and the amount. And then when it clears through Northwestern Bank, they have to make sure that the same amount is what it cleared for. There has been cases in other counties where, um, people have put an extra, tried to put an extra zero on a check, or something like that, so that's why, that's why an audit, um, an auditor, that's what they'll say is one of the first things you should do. So, of those recommendations that we had, um, gotten from Sickich, here are some of the recommendations, recommendations that we actually implemented from that 2019 review. Positive pay went into effect in September of 2020, when it was available from Northwestern Bank. Also, we do keep a list of all distribution, of recipient list of all the distribution for gift cards that we purchase. A lot of the gift cards are in human services or something like that, and we have to be really careful that we don't want to keep, we don't attach that list with our documentation, because there could be some HIPAA violation, so we make sure that it's just something that the department maintains. And each quarter now, uh, Central Finance, we're sending all vendors to the Internal Revenue Service to make sure that they're using a ten matching program, just to make sure it's a viable business with the IRS. And also, we're just, like, in Central Finance, we also shored up that the same people who inactivate vendors can't activate vendors, so that's another thing of internal controls, making sure you can't do both processes. All right, so then we come to this year. We ended up doing a review in 2021, and, um, Randy and I talked about it, and we thought we wanted to pick a certain, certain departments, and we really did evaluate all the different departments, and we discussed that, especially what's been happening in neighboring counties, we don't want to just name, because it's not just Old Clare, it's other ones too, so, you know, we've heard of other fraud in, um, circumstances there. So, what we saw, the validity of reviewing human services and land conservation and forest management with Dan's retirement, because we wanted to make sure that whoever comes in knows that we have good processes in place in that department. Uh, similar to 2019, they reviewed cash handling, proceeding, purchasing, and dispersment financial processes. And so for, like, the 2019 review, they also had some general recommendations that they had forwarded to us, and here's a list of some of them. Um, the segregations of duties, I'm sure you guys remember, you always hear that during the audit report from Clifton-Larson-Alan, it's a lot of it is that we just don't have enough staff to have all those separation of duties of all the people with cash handling, and because we handle cash, cash do that also is a, a problem. And then another thing they really talked about is that, that you want to continually educate your staff to make sure that know what to look for, um, know how important they are in the process. Also, the, this is really an interesting one, they want to establish a fraud hotline, uh, so that was something Randy and I have been discussing. Periodically compare vendor and service providers with employee. We actually did do that during the Clifton-Larson audit this last year. We looked at our employee list and compared it to, um, addresses and stuff of employees that we have. And they want us, they also recommend that we would have purchase orders for all transactions over a certain dollar amount that would be approved by finance. And, uh, so this is what, what ended up happening, since we just received this report on October twenty-sixth, we haven't really been able to implement a lot yet, but we actually have met with all the different departments, or the two departments, I should say, and they've already started to put some, some different processes in place within their department. Randy and I also have talked about maybe talking to IT to talk about putting that fraud hotline recommendation into place. The problem with the fraud hotline that we, it was Tracy, Randy, and I, we were talking about is that it seems easy to go put that into place, but then we have to have a process on the backside of how we are going to handle any, um, comments or anything that people bring forward, and then we have to figure out when will it warrant an investigation, and who would do the investigation, and stuff like that, so there's other things that we have to look at too. Fraud prevention training is the last component that we're going to talk about today. Part of that 2019 review by Sickich included fraud prevention training, and those would be the three groups that we would look at training. And these are the topics that Sickich had given us to, uh, that we may be training on. There will be a partial DOA team that's actually going to work with Sickich to make sure that we talk about the things that we think as an organization would be the most enhancement for the group. And in summary, I think that based on these reviews, as well as independent auditors, it shows that we, as Chippewa County, we, we really do have good processes in place, but we just need to keep looking for improvements, there's always room for improvement for everything. Any questions?
Any questions from the supervisor? Well, anything else, Randy?
No, I was just really encouraged, uh, uh, forensic audit, obviously, they're digging in and trying to find anything they can, and they, we pay them good money to do that. Um, a lot of their recommendations that continue to, continue to, continue to, um, and if you've ever been involved in a forensic audit, a lot of, they normally don't put in there, continue doing this, continue doing that, they find things, uh, for us to improve on, so I think our fiscal staff has done an outstanding job in, uh, policies and procedures over the years that the boards approved, has really shown that we are fiscally sound, and, um, we're taking care of the taxpayers' money, and that's what we're, we're supposed to be doing, so we, uh, we did this to be proactive, we didn't want to, you know, have something happen and then do a forensic audit, so that's the reason that we moved forward right away, um, after I had that, that training, even though it seems like it's been a long time, obviously, a lot of things have happened, but, um, to continue to do that and look for improvements, I think is the right path to be on for the county.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm here for the next one, too.
You're here for the next one, too?
You guys got me, you could double me today.
Live streaming and electronic voting update, oh, excuse me, financial update. Financial.
Okay, you ready?
We're all set.
All right, so, um, this is just my quarterly presentation, this is going to be the 2021 pre-audited financial results for three quarters of the way through for 2021. So, under general county, um, on November fifteenth, we received the state shared revenue payment in the amount of $2,223,007, so that will help offset that, um, loss amount that's showing right there. Again, the treasurer's office is still, that interest revenue on investments is still rough. Child support, just like before, it's always on that quarterly basis that we receive the funds. Here is a little bit more detail of the highlights that we just discussed, but there might be a little bit more information in there that you might want to look at. And here is the graphs for that general fund information. And next, we're going to go here into special revenue funds. Public health and ADRC, remember that the revenue is received one month later through the car system, uh, that's the state aid system. RWC, you know, we're part of that consortium. Jail assessment, that's where we utilize that $60,000 for the 2020 shower project, that's why it shows that we're, um, have overused, and you can't see quite the bottom of the slide, sorry, it looks like it's missing, but it's actually sales tax is way down at the bottom that is cut off, and, um, we are up 14.7% compared to 2020 for sales tax. And that would be as of July revenues, because remember, we're two months behind in getting that money from the state. And here is just a, um, brief, um, description of those highlights that we just discussed. And right here is going to be the special revenues, um, graphs. And here's just to go a little bit further into the special revenues, we're going to talk COVID funding is over there on your left-hand side. As you can see, I do expect that we'll keep getting different, um, funding opportunities coming through, especially with the increase of cases and such. On the right-hand side is the 2021 tax review, and then this is just why we really like to show this, just so you can see, um, so it gives you more of a comparison and just, just, than, than just the total for the year. All right, another special revenue fund that's not on the other sheet is going to be the American Rescue Plan Act funds. You'll look in that revenue column, that's that $6,280,631.55. Of that, we've received $1,102.05 of interest revenue. Really, all the rest of it is exactly the same about American Rescue funds, because we don't, we haven't heard anything back from the US Treasury, and we don't expect to hear anything back until probably first quarter of next year. Here, we're talking about debt service funds. This is where our annual debt payments are, are located, and as you can see, at the end of 2021, we had $8.6 million is what we owe out for, um, out for the, uh, bond, bonds. And then you can see over on the right-hand side was our long-term bond financing plans, and that we plan to, um, bond again here in 2022. Also, um, I think I mentioned it last time, but that, that, uh, two, 2013 CIP bonds, that bond is actually now paid off this year, so the only thing for 2022 and on will be those last two bond, bondings. And here is the graph for that debt service information. Capital projects is where we keep, where we house for the projects that were paid for by the bonding, so in this case, for that money that we had gotten last year, that is actually for, um, highway projects. We've transferred the $650,000, and if you'll recall, we have to transfer them 1.7, so the $1,050,000 actually has been transferred last week for projects, so you'll see that the next time you get a review from me. The internal service funds, um, the self-funded liability insurance, we have actually done the, um, transfer, which is always done in October or November, uh, with that, even with that transfer, I do expect that we'll have a smaller loss here in that, um, account for 2021, and it will just go against the fund balance that's in that account, there's just a little over $300,000 in that account for fund balance. And here are the graphs with the internal service funds information. Here are the enterprise and trust agency funds, so remember, the 602, the land development fund, um, the reason why you'll see that gain in there is because we, that includes the sale, uh, for the Lake Posota Business Park. And here are just the graphs. And like all the presentations, we have, um, definitions for the next three slides. Any questions?
The self-funded health insurance, would that have a, a fund title?
Yes, it will, actually, so when, what will happen is it will go on internal service funds, it's going to be Fund 703, so it will show on this slide, um, starting next year. And actually, it might start this year, because we ended up having to transfer money to the 703 fund, because we had to make some prepayments for like, um, to be part of, for reinsurance and stuff like that, so there may be some expenses in there already. For the end of 2020, good question. Good question. Anything else?
Okay, we will now move to, uh, live streaming and electronic voting update. Jackie Sattler and Andy Bower.
You want to come on? Andy's here if we have technical questions, I guess.
Okay. Pinch hitter.
So, um, you probably saw on your agenda today, um, something about YouTube, so we're going to explain that in a minute here. So our live streaming update is we're currently using what's called civic streaming through Granicus, which is all part of our agendas and minutes, um, system as well. We have encountered some technical issues. I mean, I think you guys were at one of the board meetings where we had to stop, um, where things weren't going the way we wanted. There is a significant cost was using the civic streaming. But another side of that, which I didn't put on here, was that we were looking at, as we've talked before, the remotes that you guys have in front of you. That system is being sunsetted. And so we needed to look at a new system. And originally, we wanted to use the system that's tied in with our agendas and minutes. However, once we started that process, we discovered you cannot use iPads for that system. You'd have to have laptops. So we, that would be a significant cost to replace all the iPads, to get everyone laptops. And so we just kind of decided to start looking for a different direction. Andy came up with using a YouTube channel and some other municipalities do use that. So starting in 2022, we no longer will be using the Granicus live streaming system. We will transition to our own YouTube channel. We have been testing the last three, this is our third month. And so you could see, um, that we're using it. We tested it to make sure there weren't going to be any issues before we went live with the public. So what's with the, the YouTube channel? You can see, um, it's Chippewa County, Wisconsin. It has all of our old meetings on there. Andy was able to put all of the old ones that we've recorded every meeting for the last two years, two and a half years, and they're now out on our YouTube channel. What's really nice about the YouTube channel is now we will actually get some statistics. With the current system, we have no idea how many people are watching the videos, um, who is on there. This way, now we'll be able to see if you had 10 views, 1,000 views, whatever it would be. I mean, if we discover we're getting no views, then maybe we need to have a different conversation about live streaming, but. We also then have the links on the county website for all of the past meetings. One thing that will be different is we won't have on the website now, if you go on our county website, you would see that it says live, where you'd be able to click there to see where the meeting is. You would have to go, um, through one of the other links. It won't have that live feature on there. And then, I'll go back for a second. With the YouTube channel as well, um, you have to create an account, right? You don't have to have an account to watch it, but you have to have an account if you want to like.
You can subscribe.
To subscribe to the channel. I don't know much about the YouTube channel. My kids, all they tell me about is like, I want to get some merch from this YouTube channel. I don't, we're not going to have merch, don't worry.
Yeah, so you can subscribe to the channel. There'll be two ways to follow it and get more information about when things are coming up and those types of things. The other real nice thing about the YouTube, YouTube channel is that we have very good cameras in this room. And with our old system, um, we were doing it at a, what they call standard definition. If we wanted to go to a high-definition, um, stream, it would have been a lot more expensive. With YouTube, that's all included, um, and there's no cost with YouTube. So, um, it was a little bit of an investment for the equipment, which was pretty insignificant compared to all the other technology we have in this room. Um, and then there's no annual fees with it, so kind of a win-win for that.
And then I'll put every month on the agenda, the link, because the link will change for each meeting. So then people could find it. If they open up the agenda, they would see that we have that on there, just kind of like we did when we had the WebEx stuff in the past.
And one other thing, too, YouTube is probably something that the majority of the world has used over the past few years. It's getting more and more common. So, you know, kids nowadays, it's like everything's on YouTube they're watching. I'm not sure how much you guys, uh, see videos on YouTube, but there's just a lot of familiarity with it. And it's also very compatible with a lot of different devices. So we have less, uh, technical issues that our end users will have to deal with, so.
So then that brings us to the electronic voting. As you see the remotes in front of you, this is the last month we'll be using those remotes. But we have a new system that will have a remote that's very similar. It's just a little smaller and actually has kind of a screen on it and see it up there. So currently, we're using what's called Roll Call Pro System. They sold to a company that's now called Open Meetings. When they sold, the cost went extremely high. And it has a lot of bells and whistles, but it's a lot of, again, it's going to be tablet-based. It's not, they don't have like the remotes like we have. Everything would be through iPads or on computer screens. And you'd be with us using the iPads if you had your agenda open. You'd have to switch to another software program to use the voting system. So we just thought that might be a little too much technology in the middle of a meeting. So with.
Software program.
There, you can hear me on the phone panel. So it's working. So then we, again, Andy did some research and he found this company called Meridia. And they are very well-known, um, like they're at the federal level, a lot of the government agencies use it. And then now, we were the first ones that I know of in Wisconsin that signed up. But then, as I've heard now, I think there's about five to 10 more counties that are signing up now because, again, they were in the same situation as us, where the cost just was not, um, effective or, again, the technology in a meeting. So you're still going to have the physical remotes. It's a little, it's very cost-effective. I think it's even cheaper than the system we're using now. And it's very easy to use. You guys really won't see a whole lot of difference in the meeting. There'll be another screen that looks just like this. You'll see the names. And we'll do a training in January, at the very beginning of the meeting, on how to use the remotes. Again, it's going to have like a one or a two, yes, no. We're keeping it really simple. But this way, um, it kind of keeps everything the same, but a little better, I think. Any questions?
How are we, as a county, going to, uh, get this information out to everybody? So it's very easy to use your friendly or, uh, constituents to utilize this?
For the YouTube channel?
Yes.
We already have the links out on the website. We're going to put something, like right now, every month I usually put on our Facebook page, like the link for the meetings, how to live stream. So it'll be there. And then it will be on the top of every agenda. I mean, we're only using it at the county board level at this time, like we do the live streaming now. So my agenda here, you can see at the very top, it's got the link right there. So if anyone looks at the agenda to see what the meeting is about, then they can see that, oh, I can watch it on YouTube if I want to. But if you have other suggestions or if you want it communicated another way, I mean, I'm open to whatever you.
I guess it's, it's, you know, uh, there's still a lot of people that are not totally efficient in the computer processes.
They can still come in person if they want to.
Yeah, and that brings up the other point. It's, uh, you know, some people have to drive 35 miles to come to a meeting. Some people have to drive two. So I just, it's great, it's great. I have no problem with it, but I would hope that somehow, uh, maybe put some stuff in, on a paper or whatever. Because how many visits do we really get to county website? You know, I mean, other than us.
Well, and that is a question that we've asked and partially too, why we're excited to go to the YouTube channel, because now we'll actually be able to gather that data. Like right now, we're, we're live streaming on both YouTube right now and our current system. But I have no idea how many people are looking at that live stream on our website, because we can't get that data. However, with it being on YouTube right now, if there's people watching it through the YouTube, we can see there's six people that watched it or are watching it right now.
And we had asked that of Granicus in the past, because that was the big thing, especially when COVID hit. It's like, okay, how many people are actually able to see our live stream? And they were never, never able to give us that information. They could tell us how many had the agendas in its page, and that's all the granular, more granular they could get. So, yeah, it's very exciting that we can actually see is the amount of effort we're putting into this live stream system actually worth it for the, um, the citizens.
I mean, and one thing I can do, too, is I could, um, reach out to all the municipal clerks and see if they, you know, if they post anything or if they have like a board or a newsletter, whatever they do and if they want to post, post it there. So maybe people could see, I can do that, too. That would be, I mean, and if, like I said, if anyone has any other ideas, let me know. Send me an email, call me, whatever. I mean, it would be ideal if we can, right? I mean, I think that's all of us would like more engagement and we'd like to see more of our residents participating in our meetings or watching and having a voice. So I'm open to whatever.
I just, like I say, all for it. It's just that how are we going to get the process down to words? Going to make it happen.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I would just comment that we've been using YouTube with my son's business and the feedback is absolutely invaluable. I mean, it's right there. It's a great tool. Okay, moving on to business. Are we ready? Okay, Resolution 5121?
Resolution number 51-21, resolution to designate county-owned land for economic development purposes and to authorize the Economic Development Committee to market and sell the properties. Now therefore, be it resolved that the county board does hereby authorize the Economic Development Committee to sell parcels identified as parcel A, D, E, and F on attachment four and as parcel G on attachment five for economic development purposes. And be it further resolved that the Economic Development Committee may utilize and sell portions of parcels B and C on attachment four to enhance the development of parcel A on attachment four. And be it further resolved that the Economic Development Committee may consider and approve deed restrictions on parcels A through G to ensure the proper use and development of parcels A through G for the mutual benefit and protection of all present and future owners. And be it further resolved that the proceeds, proceeds of the sale of parcels A through G shall be deposited in the land development fund for the future development of lands for economic development. Boarded to the county board by the Economic Development Committee.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
A second.
Uh, Randy and Doug, you're up for discussion.
Yeah, I'll just start off and Doug can make his way up if that will work. But, um, this has come up over a period of time. Um, there's some parcels that are just out there hanging and there's really a committee that designated to take care of them. So we started talking in our technical development, uh, work group and then the Economic Development Committee. And just felt like the committee, because of their history and dealing with land sales and, um, what they're doing with Lake Wasota Business Park, that would probably be the proper committee to, um, take on these parcels. So that's the reason for, and then Doug, I think, has got more detail on a report here for you.
So, um, good evening. Uh, within your packet, you will find, uh, included with the resolution, uh, aerial views of the properties themselves. Uh, so currently, there are six of them out, uh, by the Lake Wasota Business Park. Uh, out of those six, two of those parcels, uh, would potentially only have portions of them that would, uh, be, uh, included within a development, um, that would occur. Those two parcels, uh, within the packet are listed as parcel B and C. Parcel A, uh, in the past, if you've kept up with it, it's actually referred to as the school property. So that was the area where the Chippewa Falls School District was putting in another elementary school and then, um, just recently decided to still build it out in Stillson versus in the city of Chippewa Falls. At that point in time, when the county received that piece of property back, uh, there was some, um, inquiries into developing that parcel for, uh, commercial purposes, uh, kind of a mixed unit development. And subsequently, that proposal just kind of fluttered away. It was just a little bit too big for the developers at that point in time. And then, uh, we just kind of left it out there hanging. Then there's no committee that's really established, uh, as Randy said, to sell this particular piece of property. Secondly, uh, with, along with that proposal was to utilize portions of B and C for that. Most of those, uh, most of the portions of parcel B and C were minor in nature and they were going to supplement that, uh, proposed development. Uh, the plans that we saw did make sense for incorporating some of the land, but it wasn't going to be all of the land. And that's the reason why the resolution kind of hits on only portions of those parcels would be utilized. Uh, in, in addition to that, uh, on the west side of Highway, uh, 178, which is also Seymour Cray Boulevard, uh, there was a parcel of land that we, uh, did carve off and annexed into the city of Chippewa Falls. Uh, that particular piece, uh, within your documents is, uh, listed as parcel D. It's right south of Smiles in Motion, uh, and it does have about three quarters of an acre of land that is developable. Uh, there is a nice hillside that goes down to the southeast, uh, and then subsequently overlooks the Chippewa River as well as a bike trail, uh, and once again, Seymour Cray, uh, Boulevard. Further to the west then, in that same area, is a parcel that is, or parcels that are listed as E and F. Uh, those were, um, parcels that were remnants of the county farm. Uh, and in between, uh, E and F is actually a platted, uh, road or a, a piece of land that's platted for a future road. That is with the city of Chippewa Falls right now. Um, and, uh, we did have a request to sell parcel E, uh, to, um, an individual for a development. Uh, once again, now we're back in that same situation of how do we dispose of this piece of property? Who is the committee that's in charge of it? Uh, in since it was one that was associated with economic development, uh, that's where we felt that we needed to get some type of a resolution and include these parcels altogether in front of the, uh, county board in order to finalize that committee that would have that authority to negotiate, uh, and to, uh, sell those particular pieces of property. Uh, and in this situation, it would be for economic development. Lastly, um, uh, in, uh, sometime in this year, I can't remember, I apologize. I think it was in August, uh, there was some discussion about selling, um, 21 East Spruce Street, which is, uh, forgive me, I, I, I know where the building is. I just really, it's called the Annex Building. It's right across the road. Uh, it has housed different, uh, county agencies over the past. Uh, the last time that there was, uh, someone that was in there, uh, was for outreach services. And I think that contract ended, it was like 2014, 2015. Since then, it's set vacant, uh, and, uh, there has been some interest in selling that piece of property. But to my knowledge, there hasn't been any interest in an individual buying it from the county. Uh, but once again, it's a, uh, piece of land that is in the city of Chippewa Falls. It is owned commercial. And at that point in time, uh, Larry Ritzinger, the facilities, uh, director came and talked to me about it, about how would they start working through that process to sell it? Uh, and then I said, well, if we get it in front of the Economic Development Committee, because we do have a process set up, uh, for negotiating the sale of those parcels, that it may be just better for the Economic Development Committee to, uh, take over that responsibility. However, that also means county board approval in order to designate those for economic development in order for that to, uh, start negotiating and to selling those properties and putting in deed restrictions if needed, uh, to match either the Lake Wasota Business Park or the developments around there. With that, that is all that I have at this point in time.
Anything to add, Randy?
Nope, I think Doug covered it all.
Any questions? Supervisor Steele?
We have, or the state has certain, uh, statutes in place that, uh, when the county purchases property or property, they sell a property, uh, it's more or less established when we purchase, we can't go above, uh, the assessed value of. can't go above the assessed valuation. And by doing this over to the economic development, then there, we're giving that committee the right to negotiate and give, I guess, incentives to get that developed. Where if we just sold it without that, our county could get more money, I would think. Just asking, asking the questions.
It's really, it's really a good question. And I'm glad you brought it up, because I actually forgot about that portion of it. When the law, all the land within the Lake Wusota Business Park, we do have an existing appraisal on that property. And then it is up to the Economic Development Committee, through the ordinances and through the resolutions, to establish a fair price for that property. That would be the same situation, excuse me, with any of these other parcels, that we would be looking at selling out there. Selling it for an appraised value that would be out there. So the assessed value, I don't necessarily know how much we had paid for certain properties out there. But I think the ones that I'm referring to right now were part of the county farm decades and decades ago. So I think with the, with the Economic Development Committee, they've done a great job of negotiating the sale of property within the Lake Wusota Business Park. And in fact, since I've been involved with the Economic Development Committee, which started in 2016, we have brought in, through the negotiation of contracts and even those incentives, there's like $88 million of assessed value that we've brought into that county farm area that was not on the assessment rolls in the past. So I think with the committee, as well as with Todd and Lori and Randy working on these deals, and Charlie Walker, that we come up with a fair and equitable price for that land that we can justify either based on those appraisals that we have for it, or looking at some of those other incentives, job counts, what do they have to bring to the county as a whole. So it's duly noted in regards to that price. But we also try to back that up with some of those appraised values, Buck.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, sounds good. Okay, this one will be electronic vote. And so, motion's been made, seconded, discussion is concluded. If you are in favor of the resolution, press yes. If you are opposed, push no.
Twelve yes, zero no.
Okay. Resolution passes.
Resolution 52 dash 21, resolution to authorize Chippewa County to host Farm Technology Days in 2024. Now therefore be it resolved that the Chippewa County Board of Supervisors hereby supports and authorizes Chippewa County's participation in hosting Farm Technology Days in August 2024. And be it further resolved that the county administrator is authorized to use $20,000 from the Chippewa County Land Development Fund to support and advance ongoing activities and functions involved with the event. And be it further resolved that any expenditure incurred by Chippewa County shall be reimbursed by Farm Technology Days, Inc. And be it further resolved that the $20,000 in startup fund shall be reimbursed to Chippewa County by Farm Technology Days, Inc. And be it further resolved that any funds remaining from Farm Technology Days after all expenses have been covered and that are provided to Chippewa County shall be placed in the Chippewa County Land Development Fund. And be it further resolved that the Chippewa County Economic Development Corporation shall have the authority to appoint the Farm Technology Days Committee. And be it further resolved that the Chippewa County Administrator is hereby authorized to enter into any contract for services as may be necessary to support Farm Technology Days in 2024, forwarded to the county board by the Economic Development Committee.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. And we'll go into discussion. Randy?
Thanks, Chair. If you go to page 78 in your packet, it really outlines kind of the history of Farm Tech Days. We got contacted by Farm Tech to host in 2024. They kind of walked through what the requirements are as far as the $20,000 in seed money. Talked about the previous time it was in Chippewa County, the approximate of 20 to 30,000, which when I was leaving Lincoln County, Marathon County was hosting this, so I contacted, so their highway commissioner, I contacted him. I said, they really getting 20 to 30,000 attendees? And he said, that might be an underestimate. He said, you really need to make sure you have your traffic under control. That, he was amazed on how many people attend this event. So from an economic development side, I think it's, you know, really good for the county, obviously for farms. We want to promote our farmers. There is a need, there's a lot of time and effort that's going to be taken up to do this. They really will do that. The economic development, through Charlie Walker, is really going to work on that committee, who will be on that committee, and then they'll work on that committee. And the county board does not have to approve that committee. The economic development organization will work with local leaders, obviously, to put this together. And they've done it recently. You know, it hasn't been that many years ago. And then the seed money and then any expenditures, which we would anticipate from the highway department or from our sheriff's department, would get reimbursed through those departments. And then any additional funds that are remaining would go into the Land Development Fund, which is where we take that original $20,000 from. Charlie has volunteered his staff to do some administrative work for some of the committees. They talked it over with the director of Farm Tech Days and feel like, he felt like they could take that on. So I think that's a good thing. It's not going to put additional stress on our, our staff, which is good. But I, you know, I think you guys probably have better history than I have. I've never had with Farm Tech Days in the past, but it sounds like it's a win-win for the community and for the farmers. And, you know, I think it's a great thing that it would come to Chippewa County.
Okay. Any further discussion or questions?
Yeah, it says these 16 volunteer farmers are usually made up chairs of the subcommittees.
Yeah, so what they, they call the Farm Tech, sometimes they call it the executive committee, that will normally be the chair of the subcommittees. Like, there'll be one for entertainment, there'll be one for tents, there'll be one for food, there'll be one for implement, you know, different equipment that will be there. And then those chairs of those subcommittees will, what my understanding is, they all make up that, that bigger committee. So they're all communicating and talking together at the same time.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion?
120 acres, where do you find something like that? Is there somebody that volunteers their farm or what?
Hopefully.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know, Chair, if you've got better information than I do. But yeah, they'll, they'll reach out this spring to farmers that they feel like would, would take that on. Obviously, that's a pretty big commitment. You got 120 acres, that's not going to be under prop land. So usually, they say that just gets volunteered by a farmer to do that, or maybe they would give them some type of reimbursement, I'm not sure. But they take care of all that. The Farm Tech Days actually do have an executive director, this is what they do. So there is one little change I probably should mention, because UWO in the past has been a big part of Farm Tech Days. With the inclusion of the Old Clare Farm Tech Days, UW Extension is no longer going to be involved in this. And I don't, I don't know all the reasons for it or anything like that. That's just what the executive director talked to us about. That's one thing I probably should have mentioned. But they'll take care of all that. They'll reach out to farmers, they'll, for the, the land and deal with all those details.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing done, we'll close discussion and do the vote. Those in favor of the resolution, press yes. Those opposed, no.
Twelve yes, zero no.
Okay. Resolution 5321?
Resolution number 53 dash 21, resolution to approve the 2022 to 2024 plan of the Aging and Disability Resource Center Division of the Department of Human Services. Now therefore be it resolved that the Chippewa County Board of Supervisors does hereby approve the attached 2022 to 2024 Aging and Disability Resource Center Plan, forwarded to the county board by the Health and Human Services Board.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Yeah, motion made and seconded. And Leslie?
I'm still pretty jacked about the whole Farm Technology Days in Chippewa County. I'm sorry, but that, that just gets me really excited to see that. So, well, thank you. And I just wanted to talk to you a little bit, give you a background information. Every three years, the ADRC is required to do a three-year plan, which will help us to identify what our goals should be for the coming three years as it relates to the programs and services that we offer. Specifically, the programs that are funded through our Older Americans Act. But then we expand that and also include goals and services for people with disabilities that don't meet the requirements of that, those particular grants. So one of the challenges in this is to always look at how do we, we take the information we gather through surveys and through looking at other resources of, of data in the community and try to balance our consumer choice with taxpayer accountability and balancing the needs of each community within the county with the limited resources that we have. Trying to balance the need to do preventive type of services as well as dealing with individuals who are in what they, what they consider to be a crisis at that moment. And then balancing our various contract requirements with the staffing that we have available to serve. And then, of course, also looking at how do we balance the evolution of the Older Americans Act while still maintaining the integrity and objectives of that. So what we did was, we did survey the community. And with that, we did get information from folks, which sort of identified to us what their biggest concerns were. And this wasn't really any big shock to us, because we get the phone calls from folks telling us what they need. And those primary concerns were help with inside chores, help with maintaining their home, which, again, you know, through like handyman services. That sounded rather sexist, but I mean handy person services. And, and then getting transportation to where they need to go. And so many times that'd be transportation for the purposes of medical appointments. But transportation in general is, of course, another concern. We also looked at other resources out there that helped us to identify what are some of the other problems out there. And what, what we found, we utilized the survey that the Public Health Department does. We utilized other surveys out there, like the Alice Report, the community, or the county rankings surveys that we get. And then also surveys that just are, are made available that we can find out there. We also used the American Community Survey, which takes information from the census and then identifies, basically looks at that and tries to project what it's going to be for various population trends in the, in the coming years. And so basically, those were the things we utilized to help us identify our goals. And then we had goals that were required of us. We needed to address goals as it relates to our elderly nutrition program, which is also the meals that we serve in a group setting, and the Meals on Wheels program. We needed to address healthy living or health promotion programs. We needed to address our caregiver support programs and our in-home support programs, which we do right now with our homemaker housekeeping programs. In addition, they wanted to make sure that we look at a person-centered approach. So we had to have goals related to person-centered approaches, community engagement and feedback, advocacy, and reduction of barriers for folks related to racial equity and inclusiveness. And then also increasing the knowledge and skills of individuals as it relates to advocacy. So when you look at those goals that we established, we had to incorporate all of those different things into the process. So when you looked at the goals in the, in the document, you can see what they are and kind of the background information that goes into identifying how we're going to do that.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Discussion, any further discussion? If not, we will take the vote. Those wishing to approve, press yes. Those not wishing to approve, press here, no.
Twelve yes, zero no.
Thank you.
Okay. Resolution 54 dash 21 will be read by title only because of its length. So we will move on.
Resolution 5421, resolution to authorize Chippewa County to enter into the, into the settlement agreements with McKesson Corporation, Cardinal Health Incorporated, AmerisourceBergen Corporation, Johnson &amp; Johnson, Janssen Pharmaceuticals, Inc., Ortho McNeil, Janssen Pharmaceuticals, Inc., and Janssen Pharmaceutical, Inc., to agree to the terms of the MLU allocating settlement proceeds and to authorize entry into the memorandum of understanding with the Wisconsin Attorney General.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve?
I move to approve resolution 54 dash 21.
And there's a second. Discussion, Mr. Sherman?
Have you all taken a look at the resolution? Reviewed it? This is essentially settlement with the distributors and with producers, namely Johnson &amp; Johnson. The case against the actual retailers is still pending. This has been, I'll give you a quick thumb sketch. In 2017, the board agreed to sign on to the opioid litigation. The only county in the state that is not part of this is Polk County. Four other counties did it on their own and some cities did it on their own, but they're all part of this settlement now. Essentially, once this got filed, it got assigned to, I believe, the Western District of Ohio or the Northwest District of Ohio, Judge Pollster. He made it immediately important that the parties try to resolve this with a settlement. So he pushed the parties towards settlement. They set up settlement committees for both sides. And this is the work that has come about. There was a lot more that goes on behind the scenes, obviously determining equations for, for settlements, et cetera, et cetera, damages, expert witnesses, et cetera. But anyway, this is what they came to. Both sides agreed to the settlement. This needs to be resolved by January 2nd. If we don't sign off on this by January 2nd, we are on our own. And if you looked in one of the attachments, I believe, it talks about the, essentially the consequences. The 90 days, we would have to be ready to go to trial. So the judge put the, put the full court press on here, essentially. What this means for Chippewa County is if we approve this resolution tonight, Randy will be authorized to sign four documents, which I just gave to Tracy. Maybe a little bit tempting karma here, but assuming you pass this resolution, he would sign four agreements with the distributors, the one with the distributor, the one with Johnson &amp; Johnson, one with the state AG, and then one to set up an escrow account. If you looked at the allocation spreadsheet, essentially says that Chippewa County is looking at 1.96 million. That's actually 0.696% of what we're getting in Wisconsin. This, they could be subject to some attorney's fees and court costs, but they're trying to resolve those through the national settlement before it comes to the state. We're hoping that it will be minimal of the effect on that, but there is a, there's a decent chance that the 1.96 will amount because of these attorney's fees. Attorney's fees we agreed to in 2017, we're going to be 25%. Litigation council has agreed to cap that at 20%, so that's a difference of 5%. For Wisconsin's perspective, this is a really good resolution. We are, counties, the local governments are getting 70%. The state is getting 30%. Other states, it was a little, a lot less than that. We actually passed legislation in June that authorized this, the settlement was just, this was, legislation was just written for this settlement. I think as I was looking through this, the money will start flowing potentially in April. Johnson &amp; Johnson has nine years to pay off their $5 billion, and the distributors have 18 years to pay off the $21 billion. So it's a total of a little over $26 billion in settlement. This is a really good thing. When we started this back in 17, I was very, very skeptical. Our biggest issue around here is meth. But obviously, there is a, there is an opioid component here. It's becoming a stronger opioid component here. Obviously, we hear a lot of anecdotal stories. For instance, around fentanyl, it seems to be creeping into society as well. I was, I was very surprised that we're getting almost $2 million. Now, the money has to be used for opioid abatement. There's some, I think, exhibit key in the settlement agreements between the two, the manufacturer and the distributor, explains what those uses are. But as stated, this is a really good resolution for Chippewa County and, and for states and municipalities across the country. This is, this is a long time coming. If we don't agree, we're on our own. If we don't get a certain amount of participation across the state, it reduces the amount of settlement we're going to get. And when we had the conference call last week with the litigation council, they said we were close to 100%. We're probably going to come in, everybody that's in is going to sign off on this. So I would ask you to approve this tonight.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Then end discussion and move on to the vote. Those in favor, press yes. Those opposed would press.
Twelve yes, zero no.
Passes. Okay. We move on to ordinance 521, first reading.
Ordinance 521, ordinance to amend chapter 30, environment, article 2, non-metallic mining reclamation, first reading.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Board. This is the first reading of proposed revisions to the county's non-metalllic mine reclamation ordinance. And is, as is our practice, I try to provide an overview of ordinance changes at the time of the first reading, so you're aware of, of the content. So I put together a brief PowerPoint to introduce you to these, to these ordinance changes. This is simply a cartoon that illustrates nicely the two different types of non-metalllic mines that we have in Chippewa County. In the foreground is your traditional sand and gravel operation that is generally developed in glacial outwash or on river terraces, and it provides aggregate for infrastructure, for roads and for cement, asphalt. And in the background is a quarry where bedrock is being mined. And in Chippewa County, in the western part of the county, as you know, we've had deposits of sandstone that have served to support the industrial sand industry in the county. This is just a map that shows the location of these different types of mines. On the left side in the darker brown are the location of the permitted industrial sand mines. There are about seven of those that opened and were active, all of which now are undergoing a planned reclamation. We also have a very well-established and robust sand and gravel industry, very well-developed here in the county through time. And we have about 85 or so sand and gravel operations that are ongoing and subject to ongoing reclamation. This cartoon illustrates in cross-section how these mines actually are developed and reclaimed. If you go back to the first cartoon of the outwash and the sand and gravel, generally, they appear low in the landscape. This is the water table. And generally, they're developed with two lifts. The top portion, 40 feet or so above the water table is taken first, and then a second lift is taken below the water table with dredges or big backhoes. And these are pretty simply reclaimed. We simply take the topsoil off, stockpile it, and then in the end, you have ponds with side slopes where the soils are reapplied. The bedrock mines are a lot more complex. In this particular case, you can see the core hill. Before it was mined, the first step is to strip the topsoil and stockpile it, strip any overburden, the glacial till that's on top, stockpile it. Then they mine the ore, they mine the, the steep face of the sandstone, process it. And reclamation involves taking this material and putting it back and then taking the topsoil that's been stockpiled and put it, putting it back over. So it's a multi-stepped process that takes years and is quite complex to restore. So the committee started its plan revision work back in the late summer of 1919, and it did so by systematically doing a policy review and scoping exercise. The following year, it drafted ordinance changes and initiated and completed legal review, both internal and external. We worked through Office of Corporation Counsel on this. The rules require that the county cannot have an ordinance that's more stringent, the state administrative rule. So we submitted our proposed ordinance changes to DNR for their formal review and comment. Simultaneously, we issued public notice and held a public hearing and received comments from both the industry and the public. And then this fall, the committee completed its work with the final revisions and adopted the changes. So what changed? A lot of housekeeping, really. We added or changed language to better describe section titles, added language to clarify administrative procedures and requirements that we now routinely use. We provided additional cross-references to state laws and administrative rules to clarify the requirements for public safe, safety and environmental protection. And importantly, we added an explanatory note to reference something called administrative guidance. Over the years, as we've worked with the industry, we've taken, we've had to make administrative decisions that we've compiled into a side document called Administrative Guidance that provides just a little bit more detail for the applicants on how to go about developing, implementing and reclaiming land. So I'm just going to go through these categories of changes. We added or clarified language to better describe section titles. Specifically, we just changed the titles to several sections of the ordinance just to be more descriptive as to what they entailed. We added language to clarify administrative procedures and requirements. In the, in the state administrative rule and our ordinance, there's a provision called the net worth option. All mines are required to provide financial assurance to assure that there's enough money on hand that reclamation will actually occur. And there's one option whereby if a company has a high net worth, for example, if it's traded on the New York Stock Exchange, it can forego financial assurance, but there's not a lot of detail on how we go about doing that. So we provided some cross-references to other state rules that provide that detail. Importantly, we added language to clarify processes for administrative review of any type of a county decision to issue, deny, or modify a non-metalllic mine reclamation permit. We've had a couple cases where we've had people ask for contested case hearings, and Attorney Pauls had to ponder how we would go about that, whether we would use an administrative law judge or another practicing attorney, or what mechanisms would be used. So we added detail to clarify how that process would happen. We did that to assure consistency with the state administrative rules and provide greater clarity. We provided cross-references to state laws and administrative rules. NR 135, which is the Reclamation Code, requires compliance with other DNR runoff rules, ag pollution control rules, invasive species rules. So we, we wanted to more explicitly cross-reference those other code numbers. We did this to better clarify the requirements for public safety and environmental protection under state laws. This was probably our biggest significant change and something that we wanted to achieve. We added an explanatory note that referenced this administrative guidance that we've been using over the years to provide a little bit more detail how reclamation plans should be developed and how reclamation success would be measured through time. And why? We did this to better clarify the type and detail of information as recommended for reclamation planning. And most importantly, to clarify evaluation criteria that are recommended to measure and monitor reclamation to determine when a mine has been successfully reclaimed. And this is especially important for some of these bigger industrial sand mines that will take years to reclaim and for the county to determine when good is good enough. So this administrative guidance includes a series of appendices. And again, these are just recommended. They don't have the, the force of rule or law. Appendix 1A is a checklist and code citations. Appendix B is actually plan specifications that detail the type of information that we need to see in a well-defined reclamation plan. Appendix C is a little bit more detailed guidance, especially, and D, especially as it applies to mines that are developed in, in bedrock because they're a little bit more complex. Appendix E are specific categories of post-mining land uses and cover types that we would encourage applicants to use. Early on in the reclamation programming, these post-mining land uses were not very well-defined. We would have proposals to reclaim the land to recreational land or wildlife habitat. But when it comes time to actually go and do that, we didn't know what that meant. So there was a lot of confusion about what is expected and what would be adequate, whether or not there was a level playing field from one site to the next. So we developed standardized post-mining land uses and cover types in a palette that we would encourage the mining companies to use, and I'll show examples of that. Similarly, we developed standardized criteria that we would systematically use to evaluate reclamation after the site had been seeded. Because reclamation occurs over several years after the site is seeded, and we have to account for wet years and dry years and harsh storms and all the other things that come with trying to reclaim land. And this is stuff that's being done in the eastern states. Principally, it was worked out with some coal mine reclamation through the federal government. We're borrowing heavily from some of their, some of their resources. So just to illustrate this, it was kind of general. Conceptually, you can think of reclaiming lands either as conservation lands or as working lands. And if you were going to be reclaiming land as conservation lands, you would not be seeking any type of long-term economic return. You would simply be saying, we're going to reclaim these for ecological and, and natural values. For example, we would reclaim land to forest or woodland, to grassland prairie, to some combination of grassland prairie and woods called savanna, to a wetland, or to surface water ponds. And in this case, these are conservation lands, and these are the typical cover types that we would ask the developers or the miners to plan for. Alternatively, if someone wanted to reclaim to a higher economic end use, they could reclaim to working lands. But in this particular case, there, there needs to be a longer-term commitment to illustrate that these, this level of reclamation can be achieved. Because in this case, you're actually planting things, you're planning to harvest things, you're adding nutrients. And we're looking in the woodlots as to whether they're going to be planted to a pine plantation or a mixed forest, or importantly, if someone wants to target agricultural production, whether they're going to reclaim to pasture, to hayfields, or if they want to shoot for a much higher use, and that would be to actually grow crops that would produce grains. So the idea is you've got kind of an escalating set of reclamation targets that you would use. Similarly, a mining company could propose to reclaim land to residential or commercial use or industrial use. And this is being done particularly in areas that are in and around the urban area, where they're able to go in, mine sand and gravel, and then actually reclaim land to a golf course or a subdivision. So it's all about location and optimizing reclamation. As I mentioned, we're expecting a three-to-five-year performance period for lands that are being reclaimed to ecological uses and probably five to seven years for lands that are being reclaimed to working lands. So what do we look at, and this is one of my last slides here, to determine a reclamation success? Well, we would look at whether the site is stable, whether there's sheet and real erosion or channel erosion. whether there's sheet and real erosion or channel erosion or any type of mass wasting. And we would actually go and be able to measure the percent of the area where these issues happen. We would look at plant density and species diversity, the type of plants that are planted, what survives, and also the extent of noxious weeds or invasive species, because in these sites that are disturbed, the invasive species and weeds are the first invaders that come in, and to get those under control is very important. Secondly, we would look at soil chemistry. These are things you can measure through soil tests and soil fertility. And then we would look at soil physical characteristics, including soil depth and infiltration, how readily the soil can return its infiltration capacity and suck up water that runs on it. And then finally, plant root depth. So this is an overview of what we're proposing. This is a nice shot of a site that is undergoing reclamation. This is the Superior Silica Sand Site. And you can see what those wooded ridges look like in the foreground that aren't disturbed. This is the ridge that has been mined. And here is the, that, that high wall where the sandstone has been removed in two lifts, and there's a pond in the bottom. But in the foreground, and this is where the, those stockpiles are, these are the stockpiles of washed sand. This is the beginning of the site that is being, the ridge that's being reformed. And this area here and this area have already actually been reclaimed. This area here on top is a five, a fifty-year prairie that was installed in cooperation with UW River Falls to illustrate and demonstrate that prairie restoration is an option. This area here has been reclaimed as a hayfield. This one's been in hay for four years. This has been in hay for about five. And this area here in between, where you can see the, these terraces, is an area that is undergoing reclamation but has significant sheet and real erosion that we haven't been able to certify. So it's an ongoing process, but importantly, the changes are to provide clarity and to assure consistency and clear reclamation targets as the county continues to work with the industry on these measures. With that, Mr. Chair, I address any questions and just anticipate a second reading.
Any questions? Yes, Michelle.
I have a question. So in the letter from the DNR, they indicate thirty-seven-nine parent B isn't necessary in the ordinance, however, it still remains in the ordinance. Is there a reason for that?
Yeah, that's the provision, that's the provision for high walls. And high walls are, are allowed under the state administrative rule. And the committee, in its administrative guidance, initially clarified that high walls were not something that we would accept. And this, the committee at the time, and that, this was the committee that was in place in two thousand and eleven, indicated that they wanted three-to-one side slopes that would have cross-slope diversions to provide stability. But the state administrative rule allows for engineered high walls that would not have soil on them. So the committee went back and forth and wrestled with it, and all the way up into the public hearing, we were receiving comments from the industry that closely looked at the words we were using. So to answer your question, we had language in the ordinance that we gained concurrence on with everybody. And even though DNR said, but you really don't need it, it was easier to leave it in than to take it out and knowing it's going to be exactly the state language.
Any other questions? Mr. Houser.
Not really a question, but just a comment to the entire board that the committee really worked hard to implement the things that the citizens wanted. And we're always going to be limited by the state, and Dan referenced that. So really, this is the best that we could.
Any other discussion? Okay. Agenda items for future consideration. If something comes up, feel free to give me a call, or Tracy, and we'll take a look at it. So I would then seek a motion to adjourn. Chair, a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Dan? Could you wait just a second? I wanted to bring some. Okay, we are adjourned.